I'd like to call this October 14th, regular council meeting in order. Would everybody please rise for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Devine.
Here.
Mr. Sabatini.
Here.
Mr. Pezzle.
Here.
Ms. Cullen.
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Ms. Trinell. Mr. Plensky.
Here.
First point of business this evening, we have a special guest who's making his way throughout Lower Bucks County and who's always been a big supporter of Bristol Borough. So at this time, I'd like to welcome Rob Lockery, our county commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been to about thirty-three of the fifty-four municipalities, and that's the first time I got applauded for it, so thank you. And thank you for allowing me to be here this evening, and as I just mentioned, the reason I'm here, I sent a letter asking if I could come before your council meeting at some point, and I don't know when we sent the letter out, but I've been trying to get out to all of the municipalities in Bucks County. There are fifty-four, and my goal last year, I thought I could do them all in one year, and then I realized that was going to be impossible. So I did about seventeen or so last year, probably have done that many this year so far, and will try to wrap up the rest of them next year. So I appreciate the opportunity, and the reason I'm doing this is, it's probably not the case here in Bristol Borough, but there's a lot of municipalities that I don't know, people that I haven't met before here. I know many of you, some are new faces, but I really wanted to get out, in my role as a commissioner and the chairman, to say hello, to tell you a little bit about what's going on at the county, a little bit about what our priorities are, some of mine in particular, and then really to hear from you, and what your priorities are, and what some things that I should know about that I could take back to my colleagues. I start off with this update in every municipality with talking about our number-one priority, which I'm sure is your number-one priority. It is for every municipality I've been to, and that's dealing with the budget that we all have to deal with on an annual basis, and it's been a difficult thing in these times, and it's challenging, I think, for all of us. And at the county, that's true as well. We have a $460 million budget, when you bring in all the aspects of county government, which include the courts, include children and youth, and includes all the health choices and the funding that we get from the state. So we have a really large budget, and going into 2012, the budget that we had, we had a $24 million deficit, and we needed to figure out a way to close it. And we closed that deficit through two things. One was, there was a tax increase that we put into place at that point. It was the first that the county had had in about five or six years, and that increase, that tax generated some additional revenue, call it about $12 million. We still had a $12 million gap that we had to close, and the way we decided to do that in that budget in 2012, and have continued to do that, was we made a decision to really look at reducing the workforce in county government. And just to share a little bit in general numbers, what we did is, we took a county workforce size that was, just for argument, for round numbers, about 2,600 employees. And today, we're at, well, it was maybe just under 2,600, today we're about 2,350. We've reduced the size of the workforce by about nine percent at the county government. And we did that mostly through attrition, although some of it, we did through some layoffs that you might have read about last year. There was a decision that we made, it was a hard decision to make, but I think it was the right one in the long term, where we laid off about twenty-four people, which was difficult to do, it was an unfortunate thing to do, but in the long term, it was the right thing for us to do at the county. But really, combined with the attrition, in other words, we weren't rehiring, we have a, basically, a hiring freeze in place, we are hiring in certain places where we need it. We've been able to trim that workforce, as I said, a little over 200 people. What does that mean to you, to us, in savings per year? It's about $16 million of savings that we've had into our budget by keeping a lower workforce. And we found some areas where we think that maybe we cut a little too much, some areas at our nursing home, where we thought we could outsource some of the employment there with temporary hiring and things like that. We found that that really wasn't saving us money, and, number one, and number two, it was sort of beginning to take away from the quality of the nursing home, which everybody's been very proud of in a shamany manner. So we've adjusted that, some other areas in the county we've adjusted, but all in all, today, we're roughly at 20, 2,350 or 2,360 employees, which is a lot less than we were, and has given us those savings. We've done a lot of other things in terms of finding other ways to create savings in the county budget. We recently refinanced our pension obligation bonds that the county has that had to take out about ten years ago. Because of our AAA bond rating, and because of the market rates being what they were, we were able to save $8 million by doing that transaction. We recently outsourced our prison healthcare. Not a lot of people ask me, why do we have healthcare for our prisoners, but we do, and we have to. But heretofore, the county had nurses in the county employ that were responsible, as well as contracts with physicians, to provide healthcare to prisoners. We put an RFP out a little over a year ago, and July of this year, a firm came in that their core business is providing healthcare to inmates. A company's called Prime Care. At the end of the day, it saves us a couple hundred thousand dollars, which doesn't seem like much, but overall, it will, as it adds up. Plus, they've indemnified from all liability when it comes to healthcare issues, which before, we had that liability. All of the nurse, most of, the majority of the nurses that were employed by the county, were off, all of them were offered jobs by the new company, and the majority of them took them, and are still employed, are still providing, doing nursing work, but just for a private outfitter. Some other things we did, we changed around our life insurance policies, we made some considerable savings with that. We also brought in a consultant to help us with our FMLA, that's a big issue at the county in terms of dealing with all of our employees. When you have twenty, almost 2,400, you can imagine that. And the last thing, not the last thing, but one of the things that you probably read about a lot lately, I have, is the action we took with the dependent eligibility audit, where we did an audit of the employees and their dependents, and found a fair number of ineligible dependents, which at the end of the day, we purged from our roles and is producing as savings in our premium going into next year. So these are some of the examples that we're doing to continue to work on the budget, because it's, we've got a difficult budget ahead of us for '14, we've got a difficult one ahead of us for '15 and '16, and one of the main reasons behind that is, we have some large capital projects that we're working on right now. If you've been to Doylestown lately, you've probably seen the construction of the new Justice Center. That project is about 60% complete, we anticipate moving in, moving the courts into that building, call it this time next year, fourth quarter of 2014. It's a major capital project that the county's endeavored, and on the heels of it, will be the reuse of the existing courthouse. So in round numbers, more than half, 60% of the building's going to vacate, go over into the new Justice Center, and we're in the process right now of planning of bringing in other county agencies that we have outside of the courthouse into the existing courthouse. We have nearly, a little over a million dollars in leases that we pay, and properties that we rent. So we'll be able to get out from those leases as they are staggered and come about, we'll sell county properties that we have, put them back on the tax rolls, and basically reduce our overhead and shrink our footprint that's outside the courthouse, and bring those people in. And we're doing that planning right now, and we'll be presenting more of the details of that to the public in the next couple of weeks. But that's a major capital project that we had to incur debt for, that being the Justice Center, the reuse of the existing courthouse is one. And another one that you're probably familiar with, looking at the chief, I know he would be, is our radio project, in terms of the narrowbanding. We had to upgrade our entire 911 system based on a mandate from the federal government, from the FCC. It's costing us to the tune of $40 million to upgrade our entire system, and essentially what we're doing is, we're moving from one frequency to another frequency, that, basically, to create new bandwidth for cellphone users and the digital, you know, cellular companies that are out there. It's something that we had to do, we were mandated to do, not just Bucks County, but every municipality in the country. We're working on that now, and then you, your police, your EMS, your fire, will be buying those radios, if they've elected to, through the county and through the process. But again, that's a $40 million project. So when you add up the new Justice Center, reuse of the existing courthouse, that narrowbanding project, we have a lot of capital projects that we're undergoing right now, along with the typical things that we continue to do with our open space preservation, ag preservation, as well as we're putting new funding into our bridges. We own 115 bridges in the county, it's a constant nightmare and headache for us to maintain them and keep them open. We decided to put more dollars into the capital items for the bridges, so we could be a little bit more aggressive and proactive in addressing those bridges. So those are some of the bigger projects that we're doing at the county, and it's great that there are a lot of people here to hear this, because not always do you know what's going on at the county. Some other things, and I'll try to be quick, because there are a lot of folks here for comments tonight. Some of the other things that I've been focused on, you probably know, is economic development. We've changed around all of our economic development programs, we're in the process of changing a lot of them around. We've allocated new dollars and resources, actually, let me rephrase that, we've allocated existing dollars and resources into new programs that we think make more sense in Bucks County for our communities and for the marketplace. We've put dollars into a Bucks Renewed program, which is to help brownfield sites. We've put dollars into the Bucks Rebuild program to help our downtowns. Bristol Borough's been a part of that, and will be part of that, as you're continuing on in your efforts with the Dox and with your downtown. And we're using, talking to Mr. Pezzle here earlier, we're using the Bucks County Planning Commission in a different way than they've been in the past, and using them to help municipalities, Bristol being one of them. I think we're working with 28 municipalities on economic development initiatives when it comes to planning, zoning, grant support, and things like that. So trying to change the mindset at the Planning Commission to be a little bit more responsive and strategic with working with our communities when it comes to economic development. I could go on and on about that, I won't, but these are the things I'd like to, I wanted to share with you tonight, tell you what's going on at the county, what are some of the big issues that we're dealing with, and be happy to take a few minutes to hear what I should be listening to, and taking back to my colleagues.
Can we have any questions for Rob, or?
I'll be around, too.
Quick question for you. I saw that the state legislature is nearing, they're saying, a deal on funding roads and highways. Is that something that would affect what you guys are doing in any way?
Absolutely. We are, we are 100% behind Senate Bill One and a transportation bill in particular. We desperately need it. It will, it will impact us in the bridges, in the allotments that we get, putting bridges on the tip, the transportation improvement list. So it's a big win for us at the end of the day, for every county, every municipality, and it's something that we're very supportive of, and hopefully will get completed this fall.
Rob, maybe we can get you back one night, I mean, we have, we never have this many people.
Yeah, I thought they came for me, this is great.
Hey, we'll get you back one night and do some question and answers and stuff like that, but I appreciate you taking the time to come to Bristol, and I know you always supported this borough no matter, no matter what you did.
Yep. Well, I'll hang out and be here for a little bit.
Hang out a bit.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you, everyone.
Do you have a quick presentation from the YMCA? Tom and Ralph, are you here?
Yes.
Want to come up to the podium?
My name is Ralph Sharp, I am the branch manager at one of our sites in Newtown for the Lower Bucks Family YMCA. I have Pat and Tom go into more detail of how we came about this, this whole transition into the borough, but I just wanted to say a little about the why and what we had planned for the borough down the road. And our vision for the Bristol Borough residents and businesses is a vision to inspire our community to be healthier and to take advantage of the amazing resources available to the entire Bristol Borough community. The Y wants to work towards a goal to make Bucks County the healthiest community in America, and we strive towards that goal every single day. With over a third of American adults and youth suffering from obesity issues, a condition to several leading causes of preventable death, we want to motivate and teach our local communities how to lead healthier lifestyle, styles, and make an impact beyond the walls of our fitness facilities. The Y wants people to think differently about themselves and take control of their own health. The Y may not be able to accomplish everything that they want, but if you realize that you want to do really good things, then others will help you get it done. It takes a collective effort of inspired individuals, such as our local teachers, government, businesses, and other nonprofit organizations, to get the big dreams accomplished. The Y's mission is to create relationships and offer programs that provide a healthy start for children, growth for youth and teens, wellness for adults, and unity for families. With the help and support of our community partners and you, I believe of what we have to offer will have a major impact on overall health and wellness in the Lower Bucks County over the next couple of years, and hopefully, many, many more to come.
Thank you for letting us come tonight. Just pretty exciting news that my company, Personal Training Transformations, LLC, will be donating PT Transformations on Mill Street to the YMCA. Many of you may not realize, I started my personal training career at the Y and was amazed at the kindness and the quality, the things they tried to instill and educate families, individuals, and of course, our seniors. I'm very proud of what we created on Mill Street. We now offer programs for seniors, that being Silver Sneakers, programs for kids, MMK Junior for kids ages three to five. In our facility, we have yoga, kickboxing, boot camp, Body Blitz, MMK for adults. And we now offer programs specific to our veterans. This month, this coming month, we'll be starting an agricultural community program where we will have organic food delivered to the site. So you'll be signing up for a 10-week program, and once a week, you'll be receiving eggs and produce from locally grown farms right here in Bucks County and Burlington. We truly have become a bit of, a piece of this community. I believe that PTT and myself have really brought this gym as far as we can. I think with the community more involved, with the Y behind it, I think that the sky's the limit. I think if this town decides that they want to pull in this town, that that's something that if we focus on, together, we can accomplish it. I will still be financially supportive and professionally supportive, helping them to develop programs where I can that change lives and help to educate, especially our youth, and providing activities for the borough. This would not have been possible for me to get this far. I haven't been able to train in that gym for almost four years, not one client. So it really comes down to the staff that we have there, and quite honestly with you, it's their dedication, it's their sacrifices, and it's their commitment. Our members are amazing. We've had members since the day I walked in this town, and they're still there, followed me through two different gyms, three different gyms, excuse me. So it really is something that I hope 20 years from now, my grandchildren are involved in. And I appreciate the support that the council's already given us, and I look forward to a bright future.
Thanks, Wes.
So we are looking to do this by November 1st. We're hoping that we can make this transition from PTT to becoming a Y. On our end, from the Lower Bucks Y, is very excited about coming in and being part of the borough. We already have a little bit of our, of our presence here. This summer, we ran the 21st Century Grant with the United Way, we're currently running that now with the after-school programs that they have, the sports program with them. So we really feel that the gym being what it is, we can continue to serve members that are already there in the same aspect that they are, but we're hoping that we can get out into the community, provide the community a little bit more, some more programming. So we're very excited to be back to where our roots are, because the Y did start in the borough, and we're looking forward to a great future with the Y involved. Thank you.
I think it's a... You guys, I don't know if the public really realizes this, as I said, I started the Y. The Y, all the Lower Bucks YMCA's, actually originated here in Bristol Borough. It was started by a high school teacher, 21-year-old high school teacher, talked about a vision, and now that has grown into what is now the YMCA going all the way up into Quakertown. It was located right in Bristol High School, and then eventually moved to Mansion Street Firehouse, and was located there. From there, it transferred into Fairless Hills. So it really is, it's a homecoming for the YMCA. And just a little bit of history, I know Bristolians love history, so we'll throw that in there with it.
I think it's a great honor, anytime you could bring an establishment like the YMCA to the borough, and I know there's a lot of announcements you're going to be making over the next few months, but again, we'll hope you come back and keep updating us. Thank you. Anybody here from the parade committee?
Ellen, you want to come up?
All right. Every year, we have the pleasure of enjoying our Christmas parade. This wouldn't be possible if it wasn't for all the dedicated people in Bristol that give their time and their energy to make this happen. Every year, we like to help them out. So on behalf of Bristol Borough Council, the taxpayers, the mayor, everybody here in Bristol Borough, we'd like to give a check to Ellen, who always works very hard on fundraising, on making the parade, what it is, and just remember, if anybody out there is interested in having a float, or, you know, having a committee, all you have to do is get in touch with her, and you'll be able to be in it. So on behalf of Bristol Borough, free of charge. So that's from Ellen.
Ellen.
Thank you.
November 30th.
November 30th is our parade this year, so don't leave town.
The parade is November 30th at 1:00 p.m. The parade will be December 1st at 1:00 p.m.
Thank you, Ellen. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Catherine, are you here from the Historical Society? We also have another check for Historic Bristol Day, which is this Saturday, and it's supposed to hopefully be a beautiful day.
Hopefully, we won't have any rain.
No rain, Ellen.
No rain, right? And we always dedicate our Bristol Day, so I'm going to breathe.
Here, Betty, you want this one?
Thank you. Okay. Whereas the Bristol Culture and Historic Foundation will sponsor the annual Historic Bristol Day celebration on October 19th, 2013, and whereas this event has brought great pride to the borough of Bristol, which provides citizens a day of embrace and honor the historical significance of Bristol Borough, and whereas the council and mayor of the borough desire to honor the Bristol Culture Historic Foundation and the many hard-working volunteers for their efforts in this annual event, Bristol has great volunteers, now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the borough of Bristol, and it's hereby resolved by the authority of the same, that October 19th, 2013, is hereby designated as Historic Bristol Day, and that the Bristol Culture and Historical Foundation is hereby honored in its sponsorship of the annual Bristol Day event. The council and mayor congratulate the participants, volunteers, and sponsors of this event, which has proven to be a highlight of the many communities, events in Bristol Borough, duly resolved this 14th day of October, 2013.
Thanks, everybody. It's a lot of work, so we just thank everybody.
All right. So on that note, I'd like to make a resolution designating Saturday, October 19th, 2013, as Historic Bristol Day.
If I have a second? Second, my Mr. Pezzle, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number two is mayor's communication.
Along with Bristol Day, I'd like to remind everybody what Councilwoman Rodriguez brought up last Monday about Bristol Appreciation Day at the senior center, the wooden... The time is 10:00. Enjoy the fun, there's going to be raffles, door prizes, food, and we're going to have entertainment there by the Bracken Cavaliers Alumni Drummer Bugle Corps, the Tri-County Concert Band, and one of the Philadelphia Mamas will be there also performing. So if you want to have a good time, come over to the center, and we'll appreciate you coming to visit us. It'll be like an open house type thing, you come see what the center is all about.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
All right, before we get into public participation, we have a quick, Rainey's here from the Riverside Theater.
Thank you. I'm just going to talk about our next production, which is Pride and Prejudice by Jane Austen. It's a fast-paced and engaging adaptation by John Juri, and we have the director here to speak about it, Keith Baker, please.
Thanks, everyone. It's the 200th anniversary of the writing of Pride and Prejudice, which I would imagine most of us have studied in school. It hasn't been done on the stage very often. It's, they've made a lot of films of it, but recently, several stage adaptations have come out, and they are fantastic. As Raina said, it's a very fast-moving, funny, and romantic piece, and one which I think that everybody, the whole family, everyone, will enjoy. We're starting our 27th season, and our opening show of the season, which was my mother's Italian, my father's Jewish, and I'm still in therapy, was the highest-selling non-musical that we have ever had at the theater. To start the season, and we're also starting with over 500 new subscribers, and given the fact that the ticket prices at the theater cover only about, not even 50% of our costs, obviously, the constant renewal and the acquiring of new subscribers is crucial to us, and fortunately, that's ongoing, and we're very, we're very fortunate to be here and to have that. I would invite all of you to come see the show. Because of the council's involvement and their gift to the theater, we can offer $5 tickets to all Bristol residents on Tuesday and Wednesday night, it's the 29th, 29th and 30th. And we open officially on the 31st, so those first two nights are really very enjoyable to see the show just, just before it opens. All you have to do at the box office is show a driver's license, or an ID of some nature, or a recent bill, and that you live in Bristol, and you're welcome. So we invite all of you, it's going to be a wonderful year, it looks like, and once again, we are blessed and very happy to be here and be welcomed in this town as we have been. Thank you so much.
Okay, we're out of public participation, so let's start on the left side tonight. Anybody on the left side of the room wants to go to the... They've made a lot of films of it, but recently, several stage adaptations have come out, and they are fantastic. As Raina said, it's a very fast-moving, funny, and romantic piece, and one which I think that everybody, the whole family, everyone, will enjoy. We're starting our 27th season, and our opening show of the season, which was my mother's Italian, my father's Jewish, and I'm still in therapy, was the highest-selling non-musical that we have ever had at the theater. To start the season-
And we're also starting with over 500 new subscribers. And given the fact that the ticket prices at the theater cover only about, not even 50% of our costs, obviously, the constant renewal and the acquiring of new subscribers is crucial to us, and fortunately, that's ongoing, and we're very fortunate to be here and to have that. I would invite all of you to come see the show. Because of the council's involvement and their gift to the theater, we can offer $5 tickets to all Bristol residents on Tuesday and Wednesday night, it's the 29th and 30th. And we open officially on the 31st, so those first two nights are really very enjoyable to see the show just before it opens. All you have to do at the box office is show a driver's license, or an ID of some nature, or a recent bill, and that you live in Bristol, and you're welcome. So, we invite all of you, it's going to be a wonderful year, it looks like, and once again, we are blessed and very happy to be here and be welcomed in this town as we have been. Thank you so much.
Okay, we're out of public participation, so let's start on the left side tonight. Anybody on the left side of the room wants to go to the podium, say your name for the record and address?
Left side.
On the left side. At your side.
Dave Gerard, Courseon Street. I like the positive events that are happening in our town. I like the future boat dock, especially the section of dock that can dock a larger ship. I think it'll be exciting to have a Navy warship in Bristol. I like that the Bristol House is sold and coming back to life. I like that in January, Mill Run might be sold, repaired, and once again, become an asset to the community. I like the spirit of volunteerism that I see so often in town. What I don't like are editorials in the Courier entitled Sex, Lies, and Lawsuits. There are so many rumors around town that I think it's time to clear the air, stay positive, and hire that outsider to investigate, just as the Courier Times and Councilman Pezza has suggested. Thank you.
Well, there's, do you want to talk about it, or?
No, not real, well, I don't really know that much about it, just what I read in the Courier, so.
I think Councilman Pezza never asked for an investigation of anything.
The Courier did. That's the exact word, hire an outsider to investigate, directly from the Courier Times.
On the Courier.
Okay.
In that editorial. Okay.
Anybody else on this side of the room would like to speak on anything? Anybody on?
I wasn't able to make last week's meeting, but I heard my name brought up, and I had an incident already with our new inspector. I just had a couple of questions. I wasn't aware of if our inspectors had some kind of powers that allowed them to come on private property without a warrant or the owner's permission. Can anyone up there help me with that?
Without a warrant?
Well, I mean, they just seem to come into my business and, you know, talk when I have customers there, and, you know, talk about these ordinances that I don't even believe to be legal, and I have never been addressed on last month's meeting when I brought those things up either. And I sent another email to Mr. Dillon, letting him know that now, if the borough employees are going to come on my property, they're going to need my permission, or a warrant to come on my property. And so, I'm just trying to find out if they have some special powers that police don't have, the FBI doesn't have, that they can just trespass on people's private property.
Press that, Mr. Solano.
Yes. First of all, a comprehensive response has been mailed to you regarding your previous allegations against the borough that you kind of outlined to council, I guess, last month, so you should receive that tomorrow. As far as the access to the property, in fact, every property owner gives a, there's an implicit permission given to the borough to enter your property for certain things, just like, not implicit, implied, just like you give an implied permission to the post office to deliver mail, to the newspaper person to come on your property. So, everyone kind of gives that. Now, if you want to rescind that specific, that implied permission, you can do that. And what will happen is, before the borough comes to do an inspection, or has to come on your property, unless it's an emergency, they will ask your permission, okay? And if you deny that permission, then they will proceed accordingly. So, you've exercised your right, and I've informed the inspector and the borough manager that we should honor your request. But, we do have a right, absent your rescission of that, we did have a right to come on your property, just like we have a right to come on every property.
That's all I was asking, if that's what it was. I wasn't sure on that, and that's why I sent something in writing about that.
We've received that, and the borough will honor that?
And I did respect the fact that when the borough workers came out to do the curb, to paint the curb, they did come in and ask permission, and I was fine with that. I'm not trying to make problems, but this is an eight-month problem I've been having for these ridiculous ordinance violations that I can't find anywhere in state law.
Well, I've addressed all those issues in the letter.
Okay. That was it, I was just, other than that, I just didn't appreciate the way the new inspector came out to the property. I have a business where people are standing in there, and he comes in, and I'm not going to use the language, he was trying to be jokingly, so I'm not going to take offense to that, but, you know, when he comes in there, right away, after I speak at a meeting on something that, on grass on the corner that my landscaper missed a day showing up for, and he was there that day anyway, I mean, it just seems like, it's almost like retaliation for me coming up here and standing up for my rights. I mean, I don't think I should, you know, make enemies for wanting to stand up for my rights, and everyone else in here should know their rights, too. I mean, I go out of my way not to bother anyone over there, and for eight months straight, I sent countless letters back to the zoning officer, informing her about these ordinances and how they were being handled, and she just would not leave me alone. I mean, it was getting to the point of ridiculousness that, eight months, I turned the other cheek, saying, "Look, leave me alone, I know I don't have to deal with this," and then that's what led me here last month, so.
Well, I think all your questions, from what I'm hearing, and I haven't seen anything, has been answered. Whether you're happy with the answer or not, I don't know. I'm sure we'll probably see you here next month if you're not.
Okay. And just the last thing, I was just a little upset that I was here last month, and I did make some allegations, and only one councilman approached me to talk to me about any of them, asked to see any evidence, showed any concern, and other than that, alls I got was legal warnings, people who didn't seem like they really cared, and frankly, I mean, I was disturbed by that, and a couple of jokes about the Constitution, which I believe all of you up there have sworn an oath to, which is a legally binding contract. If the solicitor can verify that, that is a legally binding oath.
Mr. President, since this gentleman has elected to again repeat these allegations, let me say that in my letter, which is quite extensive and addresses all the items, that the borough specifically denies violating your constitutional rights, specifically denies that we do not have authority to enforce our ordinance, and specifically denies that any of our employees have committed any fraud or felonies. So, I want to state that for the record, since you're again repeating the allegations.
I didn't repeat-
We deny everything.
I did not repeat the allegations, I asked a simple question, as if everyone up there's oath is a legally binding oath. That's all.
I don't know if that has to do anything. Of course it is.
Okay.
Let me say something else, is, you're concerned a councilman didn't come up to you. Well, they're going by the rules, and the rules are, we have a department, okay? And you've made allegations, and the borough manager asked me to respond to it, okay? It's not up to the councilman to argue with you, or negotiate with you, or explain things, okay? They're honoring the process that we have, okay? So, you're going to receive a letter, and if you want to respond, you can do that. In my letter also, you've made allegations that you filed complaints against this borough. I would like to see those complaints so we can respond.
That's fine. I'm sure the agencies will be in touch.
Anybody else on this side of the room? Anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything? Go to the podium, state your name. Go ahead.
My name is Pat McLaughlin. I live at 811 Third Avenue in Bristol. As of lately, we've been bombarded with skunks. And I never met this gentleman until he came knocking at my door, the inspector, and he said to me, "I hear you have a problem." I said, "Yes, I do." I said, "They told me," I come in sometimes 11 o'clock at night, because I go, my sister has cancer, I go to my sister's. I'm afraid I'm going to walk outside, and I'm going to be confronted with a skunk, because they had told me they saw it. Now, this is the whole neighborhood that is on Fourth Avenue, where they park in the back, and where I park in the back, that the skunks were there. He went up and down the whole of the alley behind Third Avenue and Fourth Avenue to tell them that anybody that had debris in their yards, where any kind of a skunk, rats, anything else, could be, you know, they could go there and nest, to please, to remove it, they had to get it out of there. He knocked at my door, and he was a very nice man, and like I said, I appreciate that inspector. I don't know him, this is nothing political, I don't know the man, I only know that now I feel a little bit safer because these skunks aren't hiding under wood, or debris that was all over. I mean, it was terrible. They cleaned it out now, and I feel a lot safer.
Good.
And another thing, I have a cloud over my head. Another thing, I had a kitchen fire, and I got to commend the fire company again for their quick action. I, it's, I've been cooking for 40 years. I never had a fire. I only had my stove for two years, and I never used the broiler, I used the broiler, and boom! So, apparently, it had to have something to do with the broiler, because I never used it before. But, thank God, because I never thought going like this to get rid of smoke would excel it. So, this is a good thing for the people of Bristol to know that have gas. You don't do this.
Shut the door.
Shut, no, it's, the smoke was going through the whole house. I didn't realize it at the time, and my niece was in behind me, and she says to me, "Look in the oven." And I looked and hear flames were actually coming up. So, like I said, if it wasn't the quick action of two fire companies, Goodwill, and there was another fire company, I'm sorry, I don't know who you, you know, which one it was, but it's the other fire chief, his company?
That's yours.
Yes, they came to, they came to my rescue. They're my guardian angels.
Good.
So, I had to say this tonight, and like I said, it has nothing to do with politics.
Thank you.
None whatsoever, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else on this side of the room?
Jose Acevedo, North Ward. Last time I, I think the last time I was up here was after the primaries, and I voiced my displeasure about a certain sign that was put up throughout town. And it's now the general election, I don't see that sign up. I made a request that the sign not be put up in this election, or any other future election, and if the decision has been made not to put that sign back up, then I just want to make a public thank you to whoever makes that decision, because I feel obligated to make that. So, that's that with the sign. Historic Bristol Day is Saturday. I want to thank Bernard Frazapi for hosting. A man who's going to do a live presentation between 1:30 and 2:15. He's going to do like a living history of what it was like to live on a canal at that time, so.
Thank you for opening up your building.
On the walls in his building, I've been in there without his knowledge, I think, with my brothers from Florida, and there's a lot of history hanging off the wall that ties in the canal with the industry of Bristol. They both go hand in hand, and I think people from town should go there and visit that facility. I think they'll be surprised at what's, you know, all the information that's in there. And one thing I want to point out, Bernard does great work in town, and there's a fence that goes from Beaver Street to Washington Street, which is his property, part of his property. He could have put up just a black wrought iron fence, but he took it to another level. That fence depicts the life on the canal, whether it be a stubborn mule pulling the barge, a little kid fishing. I don't think a lot of people know about that fence, and I just want to thank you for going the extra mile and doing stuff like that. Always, always, always quality work. The last thing is, Bill Pezza mentioned last week that there's an owner for the docks, and the implication there is that the docks have something to do with that. And I want to thank Council President Deez Eppi for his efforts in getting that docks in there, because I don't think people realize what them docks are going to do for this town. And I think that's just the beginning, I think there's more, a lot more that has to come, so. Our future's bright, keep working together, and we'll be all right.
Thank you. Isaiah.
Good evening, Bill Pezza. Where are they? Pond Street, Bristol. Luigi, I want to mention that Ralph and I and Jim Dillon went to the county when the county was considering funding those docks, and we talked to Rob Lockery, and Rob Lockery made sure that happened, along with the other two commissioners. So, those docks are there because of Rob, and Rob, you're sitting here longer than you needed to. But, I wanted to, again, remind everyone, thank you. And that is going to have a ripple effect of economic development on the street, just like we all think it will and said it would be. So, thank you. With the other end of the street, I want to remind the citizens, we've been talking about, we're going to have the groundbreaking for the Gateway Arch at Old Route 13 and Mill Street at noon on Historic Bristol Day. And whether it's a groundbreaking or a ribbon-cutting will be based upon the weather between now and then, and the cooperation of some contractors that we have trying to get some things done for us gratis. So, either way, we're going to have, and I know Bobby mentioned, the Bracken Cavalier are going to be at, and the most important thing is they're going to be performing at the Senior Center, and that comes first. But they're also going to come and play the National Anthem for us, and a couple songs at noon at the site, and we talked to Mr. Jacob Alice today, we're going to coordinate that, so it's not a conflict. Thank you very much, and we hope to see everybody at noon on Saturday. Thank you.
Amy McElvein of Rackliff Street. I'm a member of the Advisory and Oversight Committee of the Bristol Borough 21st Century Learning Center. I'm also a team member of a group of people that are working to stand up the 2013 Bristol Fall Classic on Saturday, November 23rd. Before I share additional details about this year's Fall Classic, I want to take a minute and thank Jim Dillon, the borough manager, for all of his partnership and collaboration throughout the summer, working with us to make sure that the Bristol Borough Summer Camp program was a success. Working with Jim ensured that that program went off without a hitch. I just thought you all, President of Council and the members of council, would want to know that. The planning process is in full gear, as I expressed last week, for the single largest event required to raise funds for the Bristol Borough 21st Century Learning Center After School and Summer Camp Program. The focus of this year's event is the arts, ties in nicely with the comments of Mr. Baker, celebrating their 27th year here. We will be celebrating five talented Bristolians that initially pursued their craft here in the borough, but took their talent to Broadway stages, the Carnegie Hall, the West End of London, and other international venues. The honorees are Fred Connect from Lafayette Street, Dolores Ferraro from Washington Street, Charlie Saxon from Beaver Street, Ryan O'Gara from Lincoln Avenue, and Christopher Cattelli from Point Street. The theme of the Fall Classic is Bristol, Broadway, and Beyond. The venue is the, for the Fall Classic is the seventh floor of the Grundy Complex, which is, has a piece of significance for this year's group of honorees. Each of them have told us in their own way how important, how significant the Grundy Clock was in their career, as they were developing their talents, either getting them to an audition, rehearsal, or to a performance, either in New York City or Philadelphia. They counted on, and they relied upon, the Grundy Clock. Fred Baumgartner is our host for the night. He's not only lending the use of the seventh floor of the Grundy Complex, which offers panoramic views all around the building, including the skyline of Philadelphia, he's also refurbishing the Grundy Clock, which he will be rededicating at the 2013 Bristol Fall Classic. The ticket costs for the event are $75, which includes appetizers, dinner, dessert, wine, and beer. The event will include individual exhibits about each of the honorees, spanning their careers, beginning here in the borough, some special exhibits, and a silent auction with gifts just in time for the holiday season. We've had two Bristol Fall Classics before, they've turned out very well. Our goal is to exceed expectations this year in terms of funds raised, and showcasing another spectacular venue here in Bristol Borough. But our success is dependent on our ability to raise the funds required to support the free after-school program, so that dependence is tied directly to ticket sales and ad sales. So, we're reaching out to the businesses and professionals here in the borough, as well as to the larger ecosystem of businesses and professionals that support our economic enterprises here. We've been very fortunate to have the support of the Bristol Borough Council in the past. We appreciate the members of council who attended this event in the past, and we hope that you'll be with us on Saturday night, November 23rd. Tickets can be purchased easily in three different locations, one right here in the borough tax office, Mignoni Jewelry, and Great Ideas by Amy. My entourage last week had- My entourage last week had carnations, I don't have carnations, but I do have something to give to each of you, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy.
How you doing? Frank Mosco, Garden Street. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Pezza and I believe Mr. Winslow for getting Garden Street cleaned up on the railroad tracks. It was nice of you to go out of the way. I know how hard it is to get through the Amtrak, of all people. I got one question. In July, I came in, I filled the paper out, they sold the house next door to me. I'm happy as anything that they finally sold a house that was deplorable. But I come home one day, and all of a sudden, they're ripping the garage down. And I know a ton of work was done in this house, I never seen a permit. I filled a sheet out asking questions on July 12th. Nobody has ever answered. I asked for Mr. Miller to come over and speak to me. He would not show up at my house, he went to the house next door. I don't understand why he would avoid me. I come home, I find them ripping the garage down of 25 feet. I have a pool in my yard. No notification, no nothing. They're not putting the fence back up. I mean, I put the fence back up because I have a pool, but I should have been given some kind of notice, because the garage is right on the property line. I would have had to bump the fence in almost a foot, you know, in order to put the fence up. But thank God, I was leaving for Florida the following week. If they would have done that when I was away, who takes responsibility if, God forbid, a kid would have drowned? You know, I mean, I'm just saying, maybe somebody should put somewhere in line that if they're gonna do something like that, it's gonna affect somebody's property, that maybe they should give them notice. And I would like to know why Mr. Miller never answered me.
Let me understand, as you said on July 12th...
July 12th. I gave him, I gave him three months, I know he's busy.
What kind of paper did you fill out?
They asked me to fill out a sheet with all the questions I have. I have a copy at home, I can be more than happy to bring it to you.
You work tomorrow?
No.
Be here tomorrow morning, nine o'clock, for your answers.
That'd be a little bit later, I have to run out in the morning for a doctor.
Whatever time, make sure he gets his answers, questions answered tomorrow.
I have all my stuff there, I just, you know, and I asked him to come by the house.
That's fine. I mean, we have an inspector who will answer your questions tomorrow.
I asked him to come to my house, he wouldn't even come, Ralph, honest to God.
Whether he came to your house or not, if you filled out in July...
Showed up next door and took off.
You should have your answers. Come here tomorrow, and you'll have them.
And can we put something, maybe see about putting something in, that if they're gonna do something that's gonna affect somebody's property, and put them in...
The state building code, so we just can't adopt something.
Okay.
Whatever the state requirements are, but if somebody's taking down a garage that exposes your property...
Right.
With a pool, that should have been known to the person taking it down. So maybe they didn't pull a permit on that.
No, they pulled it, they had it there.
Well, then maybe they were told that.
It was, it was, the garage was in bad shape, I'm not even arguing that.
Maybe they were told to put something up and they didn't, so...
Well luckily, I mean, I had the guy come right away and get a fence in because I didn't have a choice, but thank God I wasn't away, and my yard was left open for a kid to drown.
Well, let's take...
And the moral of the thing is, I don't want to see a kid get hurt because somebody was careless.
Let's take one step at a time, let's get your questions answered tomorrow.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to comment on anything or anything they...
Joe Saxon, Farragut Avenue. I have a couple of things I'd like to speak about, Mr. Chairman. First thing is that, you know, it's a great time to live in Bristol Borough, especially in the month of October with all the things that we have going on with Historic Bristol Day, with the 21st Century program that's going on now with the YMCA moving into town. So it's really a good thing living in town, it's always good to live here. There seems to be a lot of good programs going on. One of the things I'd like to speak about is Item 10, that's on the agenda for tonight, on authorizing the Borough Manager to prepare a proposal to retain a consultant to assess and provide recommendations on the Police Department policies and procedures. I'd like to encourage the council to vote yes on this agenda item. As we all know, in the next couple of weeks, there's gonna be an election in Bristol Borough. There will be an election for council and mayor, and in the next couple of weeks, we will have a new mayor at some point. It could be Mr. Sabatini or myself. I think going forward, this would be an exercise that would help the new mayor. Prior to going out of office in 2009, we were beginning to look at policies and procedures. I think now that you're getting close to budget time, I think it's a good time to look at the cost for doing that, and it would be an opportune time for the manager to look at those costs. And then, as we all know, council would have to approve that type of thing because of the cost factor involved. If I'm fortunate enough to be elected mayor, I would look forward to working along with whomever you would bring in and working along with council. One of the things I would also suggest, as we had talked about previously when I was the mayor, is that you have to make sure that you bring in all the stakeholders that are involved. And by that I mean that the police chief would need to be involved, the mayor, maybe council would have one or two council members involved, along with the police officers, because you need to get buy-in from everybody. So I think it would be good to bring in somebody. Fortunately, in my particular case, I have a background in this field of policies and procedures, and was previously certified by an international standards organization. Although, when I was here last time as mayor, we were looking at the International Police Chiefs Organization set of standards, which I think most police organizations today follow. So I've just encouraged council to vote yes on Item 10. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to like to speak on anything?
I have a small commercial. The Historical Foundation, which sponsors Bristol Day, is also having a regatta at the river at the end of the day, and we're having music and vendors on Rackle Street, so we can also attend those all over town, it's a big celebration. I have a small, well, not a small concern, but I do have a concern about voting day. For the past couple of years, I have worked at the South Warren Precinct at St. Anne Church. I am fairly new, but I have had help, had help from men and women who are more than experienced than I. We work hard to keep the election process moving smoothly, and we adhere to regulations. This past May, on primary day, we endured something unlike anything that had ever happened before. Some certified watchers were boisterously insulting, accusatory, and confrontational. This went on the entire day during the vote count. We felt they were putting on a show to make voters believe that we were doing something unethical. Nothing of the kind was happening. Is there anything the council can do, such as work with the Board of Elections to prevent or at least address this kind of conduct from happening again, and to ensure that those who disrupt the process are ousted immediately? Working the precinct tables is an intense process that does not lend itself to chaos. Thank you, Mr. President.
Just for the record, Catherine, to let you know, I have contacted County Commissioner Diane Marsaglia, and I will speak to Commissioner Lockery tonight about what took place in all four polling places last year, and I'm being insured that it will not happen this year. There will be no intimidation, there will be no, there was a lot of things that I felt bad for the people that put forty years of their time in, and I know Pat was working at a polling place, and she, they don't want to come back, they don't want to deal with this anymore. So, you know, it's gonna end, and I'll talk to Commissioner Lockery about it. Again, there were letters sent to the Board of Elections last year from judge of elections and from constables that said they're tired of being harassed at the polling place, there's people tired of being harassed when they come to vote. Everything was being questioned, like you said, there was some kind of conspiracy or corruption going on, and I could tell you, it will not happen this year. Okay, that ends public participation. Let's go to number...
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of September 9th and October 7th, accept the treasurer's report for August, accept the police and DJ's report for September, accept the fire chief's report for September, accept the inspection department report for September, accept the public works department report for September, accept the Harv report and decision of 9:30.
I have a second, second by Ms. Rodriguez. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, number five.
I'd like to make a motion to terminate the employment of the temporary part-time inspector.
Second, second by Mr. Sabatini. Questions or comments? Mr. Devine?
Yeah, before we vote, I would like to strongly suggest to the rest of council that we should really reconsider this appointment. Although the Branigan name is a very well-respected name in the borough, Kevin isn't the most qualified person for that position. And people in the community have made it very clear that they do not want a person with his past coming onto their properties and having the ability to tell them what to do when he absolutely didn't do it himself. So I would like council to understand, and I understand the position that Mr. Pezza and Ms. Cullen had, that they wanted to get somebody out there as soon as possible, but we have to make sure that we have the most qualified people in those positions. We have a lot of things going on. Mr. Pezza, Greg's father's doing a great job down on, you know, with Bristol, the, what is the thing on, down on Mill Street we're doing?
Gateway Arch.
Yes, the Gateway Arch. And it would be very embarrassing to have somebody that's coming into the borough to be able, you know, that wants to spend money, come in, and then we're having all these things in the paper that are negative. And I just want to say, what's going to happen, and I'm going to tell you, we're going to have another lawsuit, which is going to put another black eye onto the borough. The only thing we could do now, we made a mistake the last time, I hope that we correct it now.
I think the only one being negative about the position is you. I don't think anybody on this council had anything to say but you. And first of all, as far as his qualifications, I think he's more than qualified to do the job he's doing. I asked the Borough Manager to just give us a little idea of what he did since he's been here. And you want to...
He's handled junk and unregistered vehicles, eighteen of them. This is all within the period of September 13th through October 11th. He handled six sidewalk complaints, grass and weed complaints, thirty-nine of those, trash complaints, thirty-one, miscellaneous, which involves tree complaints, zoning complaints, there were twelve, and he's issued six court citations. And he's also checked out on the weekends any activities, and there's been no unregistered move-ins or unauthorized work was detected during the three weekends that he drove around for a couple of hours looking for issues.
Okay, so...
I think that, you know, put everything aside, this council wanted somebody to hit the streets running. He did that, he's fulfilled everything we have asked him to fulfill. I think he's doing a great job. I mean, everybody deserves a second chance in life, nobody sits here and criticizes everybody's family. I think it's a disgrace the way you're talking about him and his family. I think that he's doing a good job, let the guy go, let him do his job, he's doing more than we expected. John Miller, I asked John Miller to give me an update, he said he's more than happy with him, he understands the process, he's not doing electrical or building or plumbing, he's handling complaints from the camp, the borough, and from citizens who have things like high grass or cars parked behind their home and things that nobody, we couldn't get to. So he's now fulfilling that for this council. And he's doing, not only he's doing it, he's doing an outstanding job doing it. So give him a break.
Okay, Mr. President.
Give him a break.
It's, Mr. President, let's let me... It's not the idea of giving anybody a break, and just to answer...
Oh, it is, don't even badmouth it here for one we hired.
Mr. President, did I jump in the middle when you were talking? I let you speak, now I would like to have a floor. Is, number one, I was never talking bad about the man's family, I just said that the name, the Branigan name is very well-respected. All I'm saying is, Kevin, just like anybody else, okay? I don't have a problem with Kevin personally, it's not the idea. Just like you guys always talk about personal. Personally, I like the guy, I don't have a problem with him. The idea is, when we are talking about the borough business, right? If this was a business, we are responsible for who we put out there. Now, and when you say nobody else questioned anything, the last meeting we had when he was hired, there was questions by both Mr. Pezza and Ms. Cullen about the process of hiring, which I think that we didn't do a good job in the process of hiring. The second part about it is this, if we were running a business, wouldn't we want to see a resume? Wouldn't we want to have other applicants to look at to see who's the most qualified? Wouldn't we want somebody who may already be qualified to do the job, so we have options? See, that's the key when you want to run. If we want to raise the bar, like we're talking about, I don't want it to be lip service. It has to be done with qualified people in all positions. Not because I feel that he needs a break, everybody needs a break, and I'm not judging anybody. All I'm saying is, when you put yourself in that position, right, and you, and you already are known to be habitual, you know, code breaker yourself, that's not the, you put yourself in that position, right? It's not, it's not getting a second chance, he shouldn't have had the first chance.
You're saying, you're saying he's an habitual code...
Habitual code breaker, he's doing it now. You go by his building, he parks on the sidewalk, his dogs are running out, he's driving around in our vehicle, telling people that he's going to sue everybody on Facebook that called him a criminal, in our, in our, in our vehicle. Is this what we want?
Well, first of all, by the time we went through the process that you wanted, it would take a month or more. And we said...
Oh, a month?
We said, well, we said we would hire him to get us through a crucial time.
Temporary.
Temporary. Five, six weeks, we'll talk about a position in the budget for next year and move forward. Everybody agreed on that.
Everybody did agree on it.
You didn't have nothing to say in the back room. No, you did have a lot to say in the back room.
Exactly. And I say a lot in the back room, and I say it in the front room.
Mr. Pezza, what do you have?
I was just gonna ask that we clarify what Kevin, I know you said it, but I think it's getting lost on some people, what Kevin's actual job description is, and how long it's for.
He's a part-time inspector, hired to get us through a crucial period of time. We were hoping it'd be five, six weeks to get us through September and October, and if we need him to go a little bit further into November, John said he's catching up on a lot of complaints that he couldn't get to, and John said he's doing a great job.
And I've heard that as well, but I do think there's some misconceptions out there about how long Kevin is employed and what the job is that he's doing. And part of the reason of, a lot of our logic was, hit the ground running, was to get him out there and get going. We've got about a month left of the weather where it can actually, where we can actually get anything, anything done. And I would say, you know, our discussion last month is well, last week, last month is well documented, but, you know, I look at Facebook too, and the things that people are saying about him and his family are disgraceful, especially because I don't know that they know them to be true. I would be worried about, I would worry myself if I'm one of the people that threw out some of those outrageous accusations that I never knew to be true, and I thought maybe they knew something we didn't know, but I'm coming to realize that they didn't. They're just making things up about Kevin and his family, and I think that's a disgrace.
And in the ten years that we've sat here, anything that had to do with personnel matters, anything that had to do with people that were employed by the borough, we're usually discussed in executive sessions. I don't think it's right to sit here and blast him and his family the way we are on TV. If we really have an issue, I think with all due respect to him and anybody who's ever been employed by the borough, it should have been done in executive session, not here the way we've carried on. That's my opinion.
Well, there's, there's two things.
Sabatini.
There's always two things.
You see the hand I had up? Here's the thing about it, I had the problem, Betty jumped in, I had my hand up for her.
You go all night.
That's what I'm saying, that's to be fair.
Mr. Devine.
So, the thing about it that you're talking about, I don't know if everybody was sleeping, but there was a gentleman in, that came up during public participation and felt he was retaliated against for speaking. And what is the first thing he does? He goes to the man's business and goes there because he has grass that's a little higher than whatever, and his landscaper, who gets kudos from the rest of council, was his landscaper. He goes out and he cuts his grass that day. What I'm saying is this, the way it looks to the public, whether you guys want to act like it's not a big deal, you can't argue with the idea the man... you can't argue with the idea, the man is employ, if he's employed by the borough, he should follow the same rules that we do, a resume, post the position, put it out there so we have the best candidate, Betty. Are you okay?
Well, guess what? It's done. We should just vote, and that's it. This is the second time we're voting on the same thing.
Because, that's...
That's because of you, Tony. Because of you.
It's not because of me, because I'm the only one that speaks up. Betty, don't you understand that?
Because you spoke up, you could have did that any other time. You waited till you get, you got on the TV. You like to be on TV all the time. You love to do it all the time, Tony.
Betty, Betty, you look silly. You're silly.
Mr. Sabatini.
Yeah, the reason I, uh, looking, not to just terminate the job, so to speak, is, I just think that the way it was handled, not getting, uh, a sit-down with a couple of other people, just the way it was presented and thrown in our lap, I think it was really bad.
You sat here for sixteen years. How many people did you hire to vote on that you didn't interview? And don't tell me nobody.
Um, we always...
We, we always, we always brought...
We never went from one week to...
But I'm saying, we always brought...
Have we ever done that?
Yes.
When?
A lot of times. All the crossing guards, all the people that was hired in this borough. You, we sat and interviewed them?
No, 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 no. I didn't say interviewed. I said there was a long, there was a period.
There were a lot of people we hired.
It wasn't just brought up and hired.
Yes, there were.
So, what you're saying is, so what you're saying is, everything that you did before was the right way. Maybe before, like we talked about, it wasn't the right way from the beginning.
In your opinion.
It should be everywhere. If you're running a business, you run it the same way all the time. You have a certain set of rules that you follow. When you hire people, there's a process. That's what you do. That's how you run a business.
I, I just, I talked to John Miller myself, and he said that it has really freed him up, and that's what Greg and I had asked for a while ago. And he's happy with what Mr. Brannigan's doing. He's very happy. So, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, and I would like to move forward.
Thank you.
All right, so there's a motion, a second on the floor. Mr. Devine, you want to comment on anything?
I just wanted to comment, because it was said at the last meeting that there was some high grass, and we went out there for retaliation. It was an anonymous complaint. We have a picture. It was very high grass. It was really outrageous. Mr. Brannigan offered to go out there because he knew the property owner. They've been friends for years, and he just would go out and talk to them, but he, he was blown away real quickly. So, it was not any sort of retaliation at all. It was a, that grass was very high, so.
Okay, can we get a roll call vote, please? Mr. Devine?
Yes, terminate the employment.
Guess what?
Terminate the employment.
Mr. Sabatini?
I'm going to vote to terminate only because, not against Kevin Brannigan. I think he's a great guy. I just do not like the way it was set up, and I got to stand for what I believe in.
That's a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Pezza?
No.
Ms. Cullen?
No.
Ms. Rodriguez?
No.
Ms. Trenell is absent. Mr. Plansky?
No.
Mr. DeGiseppe?
No.
Motion carries. Does not carry. Does not carry. Number six.
Mr. President, I'd like to bear with me, this is a lengthy one. I'd like to make a motion to approve the preliminary final land development plans of Bernard Muzaki for 100 Green Lane, Bristol Borough, Pennsylvania. Tax parcel numbers four dash twenty-seven dash ninety-eight and four dash twenty-nine dash ninety-nine, according to plans prepared by SiteWorks Consultants, Incorporated, project number T-0018437, dated May fifteenth, two thousand and twelve, last revised June twentieth, two thousand and thirteen, consisting of sheets one through seven, subject to the following conditions and approved waivers. Number one, compliance with the items set forth in the review letter of the Borough Engineer Gilmore &amp; Associates, dated August first, two thousand and thirteen, except for those items noted below. Number two, compliance with the Bucks County Planning Commission report dated June twenty-first, two thousand and twelve, except for those items noted below. Number three, compliance with the Bristol Borough Planning Commission report dated August twenty-eighth, two thousand and thirteen, except as noted below. Uh, number four, compliance with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Review comments in their letter dated August first, two thousand and thirteen. Number five, the applicant obtain a PA dot highway occupancy permit and post-financial security with PA dot for the proposed driveway and other required improvements within the PA dot right-of-way along Green Lane. Number six, obtain the necessary Bucks County Conservation District erosion and settlement control permit based upon the last revised land development plan. Number seven, record the necessary deed of easement with the Moose Lodge with reference to the proposed twenty-four-foot-wide driveway across tax parcel zero four dash twenty-one dash one hundred, including the recording of a new deed for the Moose property acknowledging the deed of easement. Number eight, execute the necessary deed of easement with the borough and record the deed acknowledging the existing storm pipe across the applicant's property at parcel zero four dash twenty-seven dash ninety-eight, acknowledging that the applicant will accept and be responsible for the ongoing maintenance and care of the borough's storm pipe. Number nine, the applicant has agreed to purchase and install at his cost historic streetlights on the existing piers along Green Lane and Farragut Avenue. The streetlights will conform to the specifications provided by the borough. Once the borough confirms proper installation of the streetlights by the applicant, the borough will accept dedication of the lights and will assume responsibility for their maintenance and care and the cost of electricity. In lieu of this dedication of the streetlights of the borough, the applicant will comply with the lighting requirements for parking lot adjacent to the building as required by section twenty-seven dash five eleven point two point A, and therefore, the requested waiver is not granted by the borough. Number ten, the applicant is granted a waiver from section twenty-seven dash five eleven point one point B of the zoning ordinance with reference to the illumination of the parking lot adjacent to the borough's right-of-way, based upon the opinion of the zoning officer as outlined in her letter of October seventh, two thousand and thirteen. Number eleven, pursuant to section twenty-seven dash seven zero four point one of the zoning ordinance, borough council has determined that the current and proposed uses of the property do not customarily require zoning spaces or docks. Therefore, this zoning requirement is waived upon the condition that any change of use will be submitted to the zoning officer by the applicant to determine whether the new use or uses require loading spaces or docks. Number twelve, borough council grants the following waivers from the subdivision land development ordinance. A, from section twenty-two dash four one three point two for a proposed curb radius of seven feet for the driveway along Farragut Avenue from the required curb radius of fifteen feet. B, from section twenty-two dash fourteen point five, the proposed park stall dimensions of nine by eighteen and nine by twenty from the required stall dimensions of ten by twenty. C, from section twenty-two dash four sixteen point one zero for a proposed landscaping coverage percentage of five point four nine from the required percentage of ten percent. And D, from section twenty-two dash seven zero three point two for a proposed plan sheet of twenty-four inches by thirty-six inches from the required sheet size of eighteen by twenty-two inches, or thirty-six by forty-four inches. Excuse me. Number thirteen, borough council grants the following waivers from the storm water management ordinance. A, from the requirement to contribute to the storm water maintenance fund, the applicant agrees to maintain at the applicant's cost the existing storm drain pipe crossing his property at parcel number four dash twenty-seven dash ninety-eight as conditioned in item eight noted above. B, from section four oh three point A requiring the preparation of a drainage plan. Since most of the information required has been included in the site plans. And C, a partial waiver from section four oh three, and the applicant has agreed to provide a rain garden and/or underground dry wells to meet most of the required runoff volume. Last page. Fourteen, compliance with the section four one four point two of the subdivision land development ordinance regarding the required protective barriers such as a curving or landscape island along the existing sidewalk on Farragut Avenue protecting from vehicle backing out of the existing parking spaces. Therefore, this waiver request is not granted by the borough council. Fifteen, the applicant shall provide the borough a recorded deed merging the consolidated existing parcels of zero four dash twenty-seven dash ninety-eight and zero four dash twenty-seven dash ninety-nine. Sixteen, funding and execution of development and financial security agreement in form of satisfactory to the acting borough solicitor and borough manager. Seventeen, subject to the obligation of the applicant to secure any or all permits required from any agencies having jurisdiction over this project, including the borough, Bucks County, the state and federal governments, including but not limited to the Bucks County Conservation District and the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. Eighteen, the property shall be served by public water and public sewer, and applicant shall secure a will serve or appropriate agreement from the appropriate water and sewer agencies confirming availability of public water and public sewer to the project. Nineteen, applicant shall pay and review all professional fees in connection with the prior reviews and their views in connection with this approval as required by the borough ordinances, rules, and regulations. Twenty, applicant shall pay all water and sewer connection fees as required, and any other applicant impact fees. Twenty-one, applicant shall comply with all other applicable borough, county, state, and federal law ordinances, rules, regulations pertaining to this project. This notice is sent. No, okay. I don't read that part. All right, and that is it.
Greg?
Yes.
Can you repeat that? I just have one question, and I think I have the right to ask, because I'm not really sure about this. Is this borough always been a practice that when a business is developed or, or done, that we, you know, we've resumed the responsibility of the lighting after? Like, he's going to supply the lights and everything, but we're going to take over the electric bill? Is that something that the borough usually does?
Yes. The art, the subdivision land development ordinance provides that when you develop a property, you have to put street lighting in. And the idea is, once the developer puts the street lighting in, that the borough will accept those streetlights.
Okay.
Okay, so, these four lights that are going in are going to be on the right-of-way. They're not actually on the applicant's property.
Okay.
Okay? But, we made a condition of that, because we don't want to be responsible for lighting the parking lot, that since we're going to take the lights, which are on the, which are on the right-of-way, the applicant's going to have to put the lights on the building to illuminate his parking lot. I think we're talking about two lights.
Okay.
Because we don't want to be responsible for doing this parking lot.
Okay.
But yes, this is customary, that we would accept streetlights that the developer puts in.
All right, thank you.
And I have a motion by Mr. Pezza, second by Mrs. Cullen. Are there any other questions or comments? Mr. Devine?
Greg, is that motion important in our package?
The whole thing?
Yeah, that you read?
No, I don't think so.
Can I use yours so I can... I'm not going to read over this. I just want to make everybody nervous.
Real quick.
The only question I have is, Mr. Muzaki and Mr. Schutter, are you guys okay in agreement with what Mr. Pezza read?
Yes.
We're good? That's the only question.
And just so you know, I mean, we've been going back and forth.
I was just, just trying to go fun.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number seven.
Greg, for your help.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bernard.
Thank you for your nice work.
Mr. President, I'd like to make, um, have an ordinance authorize advertising with ordinance amending this orderly behavior rental ordinance.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Polansky. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number eight.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept quote for handicap curb installation per engineer letter dated ten four thirteen from RNS General Contractor in the amount of eighteen thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars for twenty-six ramps.
I have a second by Mr. Pezza. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number nine.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to ratify the low bid quote for the installation of curbing along the Otter Street Recreation Site from RNS General Contractors in the amount of nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Polansky. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number ten.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the borough manager to prepare proposal to retain a consultant to assess and provide recommendations on the police department policies and procedures.
Cullen, questions or comments?
I would just, I would just like to, to reiterate that, um, you know, my intention when, when, when bringing this up from the, from the, from the go was that I think we have an exceptional police department. I think we have outstanding police officers. In fact, it's my contention that most of the problem is no longer with, with our department. Uh, that being said, I think it's important that we find a way to re-instill that confidence with the rest of the community. So, which is why I'm recommending that we look at our procedures. I don't, you know, the DA did their investigation. We've gone through all of that. Uh, I would like to look at our procedures to see if there's any updating that we can do. And I think Mr. Saxon was absolutely right with what he said earlier. Whether it be Mr. Saxon or Mr. Sabatini that's the next mayor, I think this would be a healthy process for the next mayor to be a part of with the chief and with maybe a member of council or two as well.
And this is just to prepare recommendations. It doesn't mean that we're going to do it yet, right?
Right. Well, we got to get quotes and all.
Yes.
Any other comments? Mr. Devine?
I was just wondering, is this going to be, is this going to be something that is going to kind of clear the air and clear what our police department is doing? Because, I mean, the things that have been written in the paper are, are not very, uh, you know, they're, they're not very good to the eye of, of people that are looking into Bristol, whether to move, you know, move their business, or to move, you know, their families into Bristol. I mean, I would like, I'm definitely going to go along with it, but what is the scope of this? Just to change, make recommendations to procedures?
Yeah.
Or is this, or is this something that's going to open up maybe and, and see what's going on? Because...
Well, procedures is what I'm looking at. And I think, and I also think that, um, that it's important that we ask Mr. Dillon to go out and take a look at it, because what that actually looks like, I think that's, that's going to be a work in progress, which again, is why I think Mr. Saxon is absolutely right, that we are on the precipice of having a new mayor. You know, Mr. Lebo will, will no longer be here, and I think we need to be practical about the fact that one of these two gentlemen will be our next mayor, and that they're in charge of the police department. So, working with them, I think it would be a good, fresh start to take a look.
And I think it's time we update our policies and procedures in the, in the police department. It's long overdue. So, this is a great time to bring this kind of consultant in to do that, so. I like that you...
Another question. When I hear the word consultant, I, I'm trying to, what, what are we actually getting? Is somebody who was a retired police officer, is it a business? Who, who, who are we going to do this? Is this going to be, you know, to me, it's kind of...
Again, I think, frankly, I think Mr. Dillon is, is kind of the expert on that. Not the expert on that, but he's going to look into that. And he's going to come back and say, retired police chief, a firm, you know, there may be ten different options.
Okay, so we really don't know. We're just saying something very general.
This is just the beginning.
I just want to go on record, so I understand what's going on. There is no, we're not looking into anything downstairs except procedure and policy.
Yes.
Because there is nothing wrong with downstairs.
Right.
I can tell you that right now. So, if anybody's voting on this, that we're looking into anything but to upgrade our policies, then you're voting for the wrong thing. And I don't think anybody, besides Mr. Devine, thinks there's something wrong with downstairs.
Well, it's not the idea...
Do I have any other...
Now, listen, Mr. President, it, for you to take shots, like, it's not the idea to think that there's something wrong. It's public opinion. Would people see...
Public opinion.
Listen, I, I have my opinion, just like you have yours, but I'm talking about the public, not the four or five people that usually come to council meetings, right? That support everything that you do. I'm talking about the people that are in the community. See, what they were told and what they were, what was understood is that there is no problem. That's what we told them, but we're paying people. You understand? We're paying a lot of money. And when you talk about, we're responsible, we're fiscally responsible for this, aren't we? Right? We're paying a lot of money, and we're acting like nothing happened, or nothing's going on. That's what I'm talking about.
Well, because the, both people defendants received money, that doesn't mean they were right or wrong. It's what our insurance company elected to do. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number eleven.
President, make a motion to accept retirement letter of Maria Field dated September eighteenth, two thousand, two thousand and thirteen.
Ms. Rodriguez, any questions or comments?
She'll be missed.
She is.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Before we adjourn, I just want to announce that the leaf pickup will begin Wednesday, every Wednesday from November sixth and ending December eleventh. The curb in a biodegradable bag. Interested in being scared, and you want to go see a haunted house? Saint Anne's School has their haunted house for the next few weeks, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights. And they also have a matinee for the kids. And while you're exiting the building, you can look outside. Our new sewer truck is outside, and we received a grant for a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars to purchase without costing taxpayers a dime. Our new police car is out there. Sewer truck and plow that's on there to put another truck on the street, all without raising your tax dollars. Mr. Sabatini?
I got something under other business. Okay, this is a statement. It's going to take a little bit, but please bear with me. Since, uh, everything's been getting, been getting the bad press, I just would like to read something here. Took me a little bit of time to figure this out, but basically, "I have been a member of council during a turmoil involving both the Supressy and the Webb litigation." "By reason of these lawsuits, over one million dollars was expended to pay both individuals..." By reason of these lawsuits, over $1 million was expended to pay both individuals plus our own attorney fees. On January 15 of 2012, the Carrier, in the Carrier Times, Mr. De Giuseppe said, "Bristol Council is working under a cloud because of the Webb allegations in the lawsuit and a comment made at a televised council meeting alleging that the Borough Police Department is subject to an ongoing grand jury investigation." Mr. De Giuseppe said in a letter to the DA, "I would welcome any investigation by your office into these allegations." The only alleged investigation that has been mentioned since was one in which our council solicitor first wouldn't comment on when asked directly by Councilman Devine and then said no investigation was being conducted. And then had the audacity to tell a councilman to put further questions into writing. This avoidance has made me very suspicious and very uncomfortable. In that same January 15 article, our Webb defense attorney was quoted as well. Mr. DiMato stated, "The Borough takes issue with and is offended by the various allegations in the Webb complaint that is believed to be patently false." He further stated, "Webb's complaint would be dismissed in its entirety." A year and a half later, the Borough had to shell out $440,000 for Mr. Webb. To me, it doesn't sound like the Webb lawsuit was false and was only dismissed after payment of hundreds of thousands of dollars. In a Carrier Times article on September 11, 2013, our defense attorney in the Webb litigation told the reporter, "The Borough and all the individual defendants in the case strongly wanted to defend this matter through to the conclusion." If that was correct, then why did we pay such an exuberant amount of money? According to the paper, Webb was only asking for $100,000. Since the settlement, I have been troubled by our borough's avoidance to tell the public exactly what has happened. I have never seen Mayor Lebo outraged about not being part of the settlement meeting here in the Borough Hall. I have been suspicious as to why Mayor Lebo had to have separate counsel. I have been concerned with our solicitors' attempt to shoot down members of council when they ask probative questions. To add to the insult, our hometown newspaper writes, an editorial a few weeks ago entitled, "Sex, Lies, and Lawsuits." In the editorial, a call was made for an investigation. Last week at our meeting, Councilman Pezzza also suggested an investigation. I agree with Mr. Pezzza.
I don't want to interrupt you, but I did not call for an investigation.
Okay. I am deeply troubled with the cloud that's covering our borough and our police department. Candidly, if any of one of us has violated the law or their duties and responsibilities to the citizens of Bristol, they should be terminated or made to resign immediately. Tonight, I am calling all local media to set a date and time for all of the lawyers and litigants to have an opportunity to explain the facts of both of these lawsuits. I have contacted Levittown Now, the Carrier Times, Trentonian, and Inquirer. I also welcome any TV stations that want to be involved. We should open up the schools auditorium so that the questions can be asked by an independent media so that the truth can be told. Should our borough not participate, it makes me even more suspicious that the million-dollar expense to the borough was hush money so that our misconduct would be hidden from a knowing public. As I go about knocking on doors every day, asking for support for mayor, time and time again, the citizens are dwelling on this embarrassment. I asked media to conduct this independent review, not some individual paid by the borough. That individual would be suspect to a conflict of interest since he would be, he would be paid by, for his service. Additionally, I am not asking for council support. I should have it since both Mr. De Giuseppe and Mr. Pezzza have suggested it earlier. For them, not support, for them not to support me in this suggestion would show the citizens that their words were meaningless. Let us invite the media to ask these tough questions to the legal teams and the litigants. I, for one, have many unanswered questions that I need answers to. Thank you very much.
Let me, let me... You said January 15. I asked for an investigation.
Yes, sir.
That was the meeting Mr. Devine was sworn into and brought up, that this borough was under a grand jury indictment and was under an investigation. And I said that was the first time anybody on this floor heard from that, but Mr. Devine knew that the police department or whoever was under a grand jury investigation. I had said at that meeting, if there is a grand jury investigation, then I will send a letter to the district attorney's office.
You did.
And ask, but the way you read that was totally different.
No, no.
You said it was about the suppressy case and the other thing.
Do you want me to reiterate?
Yes.
Mr. De Giuseppe said in a letter to the DA, "I would welcome any investigations by your office into the allegations."
What allegations? Keep reading.
That's it. That's all I said about that.
Well, you went into the lawsuits.
No, I went, what I did is, I went through the times period here and then I went into the lawsuit.
I said, "We welcome any investigation into the lawsuit." That's number one.
Okay.
Number two...
I'm looking for your help here.
Wait a minute. Number two, you were in the room the day we settled this case, and you agreed to settle it.
Well...
We had a meeting here that every council member attended.
Let me...
And you...
We were...
You agreed with everyone in that room based on the, it's council that was there, the insurance company, said that they wanted to settle this case and we wanted to fight it.
Mm-hmm.
And they said that it was their money. It wasn't taxpayers' money. You're saying that the taxpayers paid this, which they didn't. And you...
They eventually will be paying for it.
You were in the room when we agreed to settle this case. Am I correct?
You are very correct, but also it was not a vote.
But now you're saying, but now you're...
It was not a vote.
No, then we voted on the floor...
We did not vote.
To settle this case.
We said...
We didn't have to vote on it. The attorney said...
At that meeting, we did not have to make a vote.
That attorney said, "We didn't need to vote on it."
Does anybody object?
Anybody object?
That was the case.
Because if you do, then the borough would have to put up a million-dollar bond...
Exactly.
And fight it. As of their settlement, it did not cost the taxpayers one dime. And you agreed, as long as every member of this council, except Mr. Devine, who was out of town, and we wanted to put him on a conference call, who elected not to be part of the discussion because he was involved in something at that time. So, I don't know, we were investigated through the district attorney for 18 months. There were no found, any wrongdoings. Am I correct, Bob?
DA Heffler told me, yes.
Pardon me?
That's what the DA told me, yes.
After 18 months, the grand jury ended. There were no findings of anything in the police department. Both lawsuits were settled without any defendants being found guilty of any misconduct or anything except the officer that was, that was involved in the suppressy case. So, after two investigations, two lawsuits, nobody was found guilty, everybody was released before the settlement, the Borough Council agreed to settle, including Mr. Sabatini, and we moved on. Now, we have something tonight we want to rehash.
No.
Mr. Devine, who do you have?
You're taking it out of control. I just want to have this aired.
I don't know if you want, Pat.
I want this aired.
But who's going to air it?
I thought last week, especially after the Carrier Times wrote the article that Mr. Pezzza was looking for an investigation.
No, he's bad.
Because of my...
Excuse me, if I misread it, and I misread the paper.
Okay, I want to, I want to tell you what, what my intention was, since my name has been thrown out there a number of times tonight in the wrong context. I never called for an investigation. I said we've got a great police department.
I will do.
And I believe you believe that. But what we need to start doing is to clear the air about the cloud, not an investigation. Procedures, a fresh start. And what I find really interesting about this whole debate, and I was ready to put it to rest, I thought we had already, is that I don't think there's much disagreement up here. I just can't, I keep wondering why we keep rehashing this when we've already brought it up on the floor. We've already agreed as a council to have some sort of conversation about it moving forward. Yet, we are about to end a meeting, and all of a sudden, it's brought up again. And as the possible mayor, I recommended that either you or Mr. Saxon be leading that charge. What else, I don't know what else you want from that point forward. I don't know why this comes back up.
I'd like to have a individual out of borough investigation into this.
Pat, and this, Mr...
That's it.
Mr. Lebo will be, no longer be the mayor. And I don't know if Mr. Lebo agrees or disagrees with this. This has nothing to do with Mr. Lebo, in my opinion, right now, in this day and this place. One of the two of you is going to be the mayor. You're going to be in charge of the police department. My recommendation was, let's look at the procedures, and hopefully, the next mayor will be the one in charge of that. Now, you're calling for some public, public spectacle, and I don't think that's the way to go at all.
Spectacle. You know what the scary part, Greg, is a lot of, you know, when you're out, and I'm sure Joe knows this, there's a lot of people asking questions. When you go to try to knock on people's door, they, all they keep bringing up is this.
And we're going to try to, we're going to try to clear some of that.
And the best way to clear is...
The DA investigated for...
I don't know, I don't know, Mr. Sabatini, what you want us to call for.
I'll tell you what would be great.
Pardon me?
What I said would be perfect.
Why? I don't know what you're saying.
You did not hear what I said?
Can I, to me, what I'm hearing is this, and I heard, Mr. Pezzza, I mean, I got to go back and look at the tape, but what I heard from you last week was, and I agree with you, I thought you said an independent investigation. That's what I heard that you said last week in my ear.
Independent, yes, investigation, no.
All right, well, I got to go back and look at it, but that was, I was under the impression. To me, it's something that the people, again, it's the people of the borough would like to know, why we are paying this amount of money if there's nothing wrong. Listen, we want to clear, I want to, I want to clear, I want to clear the cloud.
Their names have been cleared. They have been cleared through the district attorney's office and through two litigations with lawsuits. No defendant that was named in the case was found guilty of any wrongdoing in the suppressy case or in the Webb case.
I know, but these things right here, what you're saying, they're semantics. They're semantics. Because the thing about it is, if there is not, if there's nothing there, that's the thing about it. If there's nothing there, open it up.
Open it to who?
Let's find, let's find out what went on. Let's find out why we paid, why we paid somebody this amount of money and that we didn't think there was a case at all. There's something there, to me. What, I mean, what's difficult about that?
We didn't pay anybody anything. The insurance company, I'm going to repeat it again, elected to cut their loss and settle the case. They felt strongly, and Mr. Sabatini could vouch for this, and every council member sitting here, they felt strongly that it was a bogus case, and they felt that they could win this case. But when you're dealing with money, they felt it was better to settle the case than to take their chance in court. And every council member that attended that executive session agreed with them not to put the taxpayers at risk for the lawsuit.
And I understand. And I, and I would have went along with it too, with the, the way that the lawyer put it to you, of course, he, they, insurance companies don't go around wanting to pay people, right? They don't go around saying, "I want to pay this amount of money. I want to go out." If nothing's wrong, they're going to fight. That's what they're going to do. And when you say that it doesn't cost us any money, I want to know what's going to happen, what's going to happen with our insurance next year, our premiums? Are they going to stay the same?
They're going to go up. No, impossible.
Are they going to stay the same?
No.
They're going to go up. So, we're paying for it. That's the thing about it.
But what was our choice? Did we create the issue?
No, but we want to find out what did create the issue.
That's all you could do. I mean, it's settled.
There's always something you could do. Listen.